Okay, welcome to all of our in-person and virtual visitors. This is the Citizen Advisory Committee's public hybrid public meeting on November 15th. This will be to discuss our, this is our public hearing for 2023 CDBG, AHTF, and home funding recommendations. A little bit of housekeeping and procedures. My name is Kimber Landry. I'm the Community Development Manager. Staff will do a brief overview and then we're going to pass it to our Chair to lead the agenda. If you are a member of the public tonight and you wish to provide comment for discussion during the meeting, please do so prior to the public hearing starting. And please email those comments to vickiedoorway@everettwa.gov. Vicky's information can also be found online at our CDBG website. The public may also access this hearing through various ways. We have the hearing on the Everett TV channel and as well as Everett TV's YouTube channel. You can also call into the public call-in number if at any time you are disconnected from our audio and that public comment, now call-in number is 425-616-3920. There is a conference ID of 724-887-726 and then the pound. And then all of this also is also listed again online at the Citizen Advisory Committee's webpage on everettwa.gov. Following the action by the committee tonight, a formal public comment period will start on November 18th and last until December 20th for the funding recommendations that are discussed. Those wishing to provide comment on those funding recommendations can learn more about this by signing up for the Community Development Newsflash or seeing the legal ad that will be posted in the Herald. At this time, I will give it over to our Chair for Roll Palm overview of community procedures.
Thank you, Kimber. So I'm going to call Roll and then I will do the overview of committee procedures. My name is Susan Moss-Hart and I am present tonight. Sue Johnson.
Here.
Matt Bissel.
Josh Bruner.
Here.
Samantha Hassan. Christopher Dingle.
Present.
Molly Everhart.
Here.
Larissa Knopf.
Here.
And Michelle Martin.
Present.
Thank you. So tonight, we will also ask the staff to identify themselves, please.
Again, Kimber Landry, Community Development Manager.
And Vicky Doorway, Community Development Specialist.
Thank you. During our committee member discussion, I will call on each member of this committee to offer questions or comments. And because we're having a hybrid approach, I will ask you if you're in person, either way, to raise your hand so that we can, the function on Teams if you're on virtual. And if you're in the room, I can't see anybody actually, so somebody will have to let me know who I need to call on, please. That would help. And the committee will be able to ask questions during the staff presentation. And yeah, and then we'll have a discussion about each item. So now I turn it back to Kimber, please, for our presentation of this year's 2023 program year and funding recommendations, please.
Thank you, Chair Moss-Hart. At this time, I am going to ask everybody to give me a little bit of patience as I make sure I bring up our presentation and then just work with me as I share our screen. Okay, at this time, please nod or give me a thumbs up if you see a slide that says 2023 priority needs and funding overview. I see a thumb, another thumb. Yes, okay, good. Okay, so again, welcome. This is for the 2023 program year for CDBG, AHTF, and home funds. And we're going to give a brief overview of the funding priorities that were established earlier this year and then where our funding falls. And then we will open up our funding spreadsheet as provided. So the first thing is just to kind of touch the base real quick again on some of our more complicated funds. This is the CDBG funds and our non-service activities. CDBG funds, again, are Community Development Block Grant funds. These are awarded directly by HUD. One of the considerations that we typically have for this is that we have funding caps for this funding source. So 15% of our annual award is reserved for public services. I will say that was actually pretty neat to find out that a consideration to increase that is currently going on. Everybody keeps your fingers crossed that they increase the cap to 20%. The other part is that we have a cap on administrative support for this. The city typically uses this to help allocate for staff expenses and administer in the CDBG program as well as other grant programs. And then the remaining funds, which are typically around 65%, are reserved for non-public service activities. And non-public service activities can be a wide range of either capital expenditures, property acquisition, economic development activities. It just can really kind of be a more broad range of development improvements for an area. So additionally, this year, we had non-public service supplemental funding for CDBG. That, if the committee can remember, we had a funding round earlier in May and June. We had a couple hundred thousand go out. That was uncommitted funding from prior CDBG program years. A lot of that was really uncommitted due to program income received through our CHIP program that received a high amount of program income due to refinancing of the outstanding loans that we had, so payoffs of those loans, as well as just certain projects not moving forward due to COVID impacts or other considerations. So we put that money out for the public to bid on or compete for earlier this year. Nobody took advantage of that, so we put that back out in this funding round. And we will be showing the committee where that falls this time. The only consideration with this large amount of funding is that it is restricted to non-service use. So it is part of that 65% that cannot be used for direct public service provision. Chair, we have one hand raised in the room. I will pause my presentation to have an answer to a question if that's okay.
Okay, yes, please do.
Sue, quick question on then. Can you clarify the non-service use?
Yeah, so again, so non-public service projects or anything from property acquisition to capital improvement projects, that can be housing rehabilitation. It can also be homebuyer assistance programs. It can be sidewalk improvements, so public infrastructure improvements. It can be public facility improvements, which can include anything from a food bank to a park.
So maybe it's easier to say what can.
What can. That's correct. So if anybody didn't hear that, the clarification was, okay, well, what can't non-service funds do? And non-service funds cannot be used to provide public service programs or direct service provision. And then, of course, the city helps to supplement that cap with our Human Needs Funds. That's why our Human Needs Funds do a lot of service focus because other funding sources are typically restricted with that. And so anything that provides public service is capped for an award for 15% of the annual CDBG allocation to the city. Everything else eligible. The one other thing that's not eligible for CDBG non-service activities is creation of new housing units. That has to be reserved for home funds only. I will also say, though, that that's also being discussed as well as the 20% cap waiver. So we'll see if any of those moves forward or changes in the future, but good question. Okay, so continuing on. So again, the annual priorities for the 2023 program year are going to be on this side as well as the next one. The one thing that I would like and ask for the committee to remember is that a lot of these carry forward annual priorities that were established by the very large community engagement effort that the Community Development Division led in 2019 and early 2020. This was because we had a consolidated plan that was due to HUD. That's a five-year long-range guiding funding document that we give to HUD about where we'd like our money to go. 2023 is kind of about the midpoint of the consolidated plans. We wanted to be able to address all the outstanding annual priorities that may have been delayed due to COVID or majors had not had the chance to be picked up yet by projects. So since the vote was to continue with that, we have, under our housing annual priority, we had supporting prioritized activities such as rehab of rental units. Housing units is, that also includes homeowner housing units. That's a typo on this. So it's rehab of existing housing units for both renters and homeowners. We had rent and utility assistance that could have been provided under housing priority, homebuyer assistance, and creation of new units. Public services, besides just general public service support, the committee asked to really prioritize behavioral health and substance abuse prevention support activities. We also had homelessness as an annual priority with operational support and adding shelter beds or assisted bed placement as prioritized activities under that priority. We also wanted to prioritize public facility improvements. And there wasn't any specified prioritizing activity for that. Public infrastructure improvements with a priority for sidewalk improvements. And then economic development with supporting activity of facade or building rehabilitation. So when we look at what was available to leverage against those priorities, for CDBG, we had about 1.3 million that went out, again, due to that non, that funding from prior program years that was never utilized. The $130,000 from public service is the 15% cap off of what our annual award would be. And our annual award is typically estimated around $850,000. So you see that the non-public service pool includes both what that 65% of that 850 would be as well as any remaining residual that would have come forward from the previous program, uncommitted program years. Out of that non-public service amount, that's where the 20% cap for CDBG admin comes in. The city typically sets aside and reserves that 20% again for staffing support for administering these grants. That's about $170,000 that's estimated for that. Out of home funds, we had about $400,000 available. And out of AHTF Affordable Housing Trust Fund dollars, we had about $140,000 available. So when we look at funding requests by priority, this is something that we haven't really gotten the chance to really do with the committee before, but I thought that this was, I've had to give this breakdown to others before and I thought it was good to bring it back to the committee. And we'll see, actually, once we're done with this, how this equates to both what's being requested and how it was broken down by awards. So as it is right now, obviously, a good significant portion, about 78% of all funding requests are focusing on the housing priority. For homelessness, we have about 7% focused on housing for, oh no, I'm sorry, about 12% for homelessness. That's the orange category. Public services is about 7%. And public services focused on behavioral health is about 3%. The reason why these don't all immediately connect with the CDBG caps is because this is for all three funding sources, home, AHTF, and CDBG. That's the end of the PowerPoint presentation. And at this time, we're going to switch over and go to our funding recommendation sheet. And so if everybody could just.
Do you have a paper here?
We do not have the PowerPoint presentation. No, we do not. Oh, of the breakdown. Yeah, no, it's a good question, Sue. And we do not do that this time. It's something that we have done in the past. Do you want to shoot it over here? That's something that we have done in the past. I forgot to do it. Okay, so at this point, what we've done is, please, give me another nod or a thumbs up if you now see an Excel document.
Yes, thumbs up.
Okay, good. Okay, so what we see here is, again, our overall of what was available. Just brief notes on, again, limitations for each funding source. The $140,000 that was put out for AHTF also includes a small amount that's going to be reallocated from a previous program year. So the annual award is estimated around 140,000, but we can reallocate previous unused funds. And so there's about $11,000 of previously unused that we're reallocating in the 2023 program year. And then home, we have the 400,000 and CDBG 1.3 million. And again, based on the caps that we have to work with, this is the breakdown of funding allocations as they were available for CDBG. And at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Vicky so she can help walk us through some of the proposals.
Excellent. Okay, so we're going to go through the proposals by funding source. And once I talk about the funding source and the recommendations, then we do have some committee members, as they were reviewing applications, that have either comments or questions. So I will bring up those comments or questions. And if the organization, we did let some of the organizations know that had specific questions from the CAC members, we did let them know too, if they could attend the hearing. If they, they won't be able to comment until the public hearing opens. So if you need to take notes of what the question was, or I can say the question again, but most of them had it in advance. Everyone who had a question had it in advance. But also, at the end of each funding source, we will allow, if CAC comes up with another question during the presentation, after each funding source, I'll open it up to the committee for questions as well. So you will get, committee can ask additional questions beyond what you may have asked when you were doing your application review and scoring. So we'll start with Affordable Housing Trust Funds. And typically, the city has utilized those funds for shelter operations. And we have three proposals from Interfaith Family Shelter, Domestic Violent Services Emergency Shelter, and the Cocoon House Transitions Program for unhoused adults. So we are able, in our funding recommendation, it's always hard, but we were able to, we were able to fully meet two requests and we're able to almost meet the final request. So we recommended for Interfaith that they receive $60,000 roughly, about $60,010. And then fully fund the DBS request at $5,000 and fully fund Cocoon House Transitions at their 46,500 request. So that basically allocates all of the funds that we have. We did have a little bit of extra funds left over, as Kimber mentioned. So we were able to reallocate those and meet at least the reduced ask and pretty close to, close to the full ask. So we had just one comment from a committee member or a question when they were reviewing applications, and it was for Interfaith Family Shelter. So Jim will ask once the public hearing opens if you want to address, but I'll go ahead and read the comment, that basically it would be valuable to understand the full range of skill-building programs managed by the resident skills coordinator and whether or not those programs include financial literacy and/or hiring or job training opportunities. So we will get to that if Jim wishes to address it from Interfaith at the public hearing. But basically, that is our recommendation to the committee. And at this time, if the committee has any questions.
I'm in a meeting.
So if the committee has any further questions about these funds, or we won't do committee discussion until the Chair opens a discussion after the staff presentation, but if you have come up with additional questions and wish to ask those right now, you may. So Chair, it looks like Sue has her hand raised.
Sorry. Okay, Sue, ask your question.
Okay, so Vicky, just clarification. I am noting that you gave full awards to two and partial on one. Is this in line with our thinking that whenever possible, that we give full funding on S when we can? Or is there rationale for why you, or is that for later on to discuss your rationale and why you picked this particular one to reduce?
No, let's see. Sorry. And Chair, I'll just let you know, committee member Bissel has just joined the presentation.
Oh, welcome.
Yes, sorry about that, Sue.
That's okay.
So is this the right time for that question? Okay, so on what basis did you decide to reduce that one?
Yeah, I can jump in and Vicky, if you have anything to add. Okay, absolutely. So one of the things that's also unique for this funding year that we haven't touched on yet is that we got to score applications for the first time with CDBG, AHTF, and home applications. First time we've done that, we had a whole subcommittee that got to guide us in our rubric for it. We got to do this wonderful system through AMPLEFUND. And with that, the scores are not to be used necessarily as the final determination for anything, but more of a guiding point for discussion. Now that being said, the other thing to consider is that some of the reallocation funds from this past year have actually come from the Interfaith Family Shelter. And so what we end up doing is rolling in that reallocation into the 2023 award to just allow that use of funds to stay consistent. We were able to meet DBS and Cocoon with their full ask for the 2023. They also did both score a little higher than Interfaith. But with the current 2021 program year, the additional funds to be reallocated came from the Interfaith 2021 award. That has now been rolled in for their 2023 recommendation. So that's what brought them up to the $60,000.
Still above their reduced ask.
Correct. It's still above the reduced ask.
88% of what they asked.
Correct. And that being said, we didn't, I don't know if we made this very clear before, but when we have staff recommendations, again, just like the scores, those are guiding points for discussions for the committee members. So you can definitely take what we have proposed and either accept it or change it.
And that's later on.
And that's later on, yeah. Right now, you guys are just making sure that you have all the clear information you need to be able to have a good discussion later. But good questions, anybody else have questions for staff or AHTF? Okay.
Not seeing any raised hands. So with that, we will move on to the home funding allocations. And this one, this is the easiest and best kind to do because basically, we're recommending that you get your full award. So we're proposing that CHIP receives their full ask. And then we didn't have a proposal for this one, but this is a program that we fund in the past through Somish County, the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance. Amber, do you want to talk a little bit more about?
Sure, I can give some more context to that. So the City of Everett, again, receives home funds through an inter-local agreement with Somish County. Somish County gets the award from HUD and then they set aside a portion for City of Everett. This year, we really only had one applicant against home, and that was CHIP. And so to that extent, we were asking just for $240,000 for them. That's about, I think, between three or four projects. Projects right now for CHIP are seeing a significant increase in costs. That's not particularly just a CHIP. We have other programs that are seeing home rehabilitation costs go up as due to very, a lot of different external market factors, really. But with that, for home program, again, home funds can be used for new housing construction. They can also be used for housing rehabilitation. CHIP ends up working, providing funds for homeowner rehabilitation. The remaining funds outside of what's available for Somish County, they have an ongoing agreement of, to Vicky mentioned, for tenant-based rental assistance with the YW. YWCA, they are the managing agency for that, use of that program. And so our recommendation is to continue to put any additional remaining funds from home that are not allocated to CHIP to the TBRA program. As we all know, financial assistance is, was very paramount during COVID and even now, it has not gone away. It's just the amount of funding to help address that has changed quite a bit. So we are asking that some of the 160,000 go towards TBRA program support. Anything else to add on that one, Vicky?
No.
Any questions from committee members? Okay.
All right, moving on to CDBG non-public service applications. So we have three applications. And again, due to the large amount of funding that's available, we are recommending that all proposals receive their full apps. So that is, again, always good and fun to do. And we did have a few comments and questions, so I will bring those up at this time. And then we have one organization that had some specific questions that I will mention. So basically, the comments had to do with, you know, keeping residents in their homes is a good use of funds and also improving the housing stock and supporting housing affordability, you know, helps to support and address the critical need in the community. So there were favorable comments towards supporting both the CHIP program and the Honage Minor Home Repair Program. And there was a specific question for, let's see, for minor home repair. They were emailing the specific questions, but I will read them and then if they choose to address them during the public comments, they can. So one was, it would be interesting to know what repairs are most commonly requested and whether or not state or federal programs can be leveraged to improve the efficiency and accelerate decarbonization. That was the first question. The second question was that the application says that we propose to provide health and safety home repairs and accessibility modifications for a minimum of 75 households in the City of Everett. Without these services, the occupants of these homes can easily become homeless. So that's what they're saying, the application says. And then the question is, it's not quite clear why the people could easily become homeless if they don't get these home repairs. Can you please provide more rationale? And then for the Child's Drive proposal for capital improvements to the Village on Hustin Road, they're looking to do the, give flooring and adding some security, such as security badges instead of using the keys. And a few comments or questions were raised by the committee members during their review. And one of the considerations was to prioritize security measures over flooring upgrades if there was a reduced funding amount. But so we asked them to be prepared to discuss the reason for prioritizing flooring over security during the public comment period if they are available. So that can be addressed shortly. So that is all the feedback or questions from the committee during their review. So that is all the feedback or questions from the committee during their review. Does the committee have any additional questions at this time about the non-public service recommendations? So Chair, Molly has her hand up.
Okay, Molly.
First of all, can you just roll so we can see Colin A. I want to refer to it by.
Yep.
Thank you. For the rehabilitation of existing units, is, I can't remember from the previous tab, is that the same thing as was being funded by the home? Or is it a different activity?
You're asking for CHIP?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's the same program. CHIP is 100% federally funded. There's no, there's no other funds to support this program besides CBG or home. So they typically have funds from both funding pools. The CHIP CBG ask is in a support administrative and projects, administrative expenses and projects. Home funds can only be used for projects, and that's because Snohomish County reserves the administrative set aside for that funding source. Good question. We have another, yeah.
Chair, we have another question from Sue.
And actually, this refers back to home. Given that we had a $400,000 pool and insufficient asks, although you allocated, you know, for Snohomish County, is there any effort to get more people to, to apply for, you know, this funding source?
Yeah, we've, we actually have done, the city staff has done quite a bit to try and work with both agencies and developers in the community. In fact, we actually have somebody that just joined the Community Planning and Economic Development Department to specifically help to facilitate more housing rehab projects, things like that. I'm not quite sure why we didn't see any proposals from the earlier funding source or funding opportunity that we had, and then furthermore, in this funding round. I do know that the people or the agencies that typically will do this kind of home improvement work, Everett Housing Authority, Housing Hope, you know, some of our other people that kind of typically apply for this, do have a lot of other active projects right now that happen to be outside the city limits. Though, I know EHA also is doing some significant work up in northeast Everett as well. And whether or not, you know, they come back in the future, who's to say? Hopefully, they do. Hopefully, they're able to come back and be able to take advantage of that. The interesting thing about home funds is that they actually have the very tight considerations for commitment and expenditure deadlines that the CBG program does not. And so if we do not meet that, we still have to do our best to try and commit the funds to an eligible project so that they can still be utilized for the City of Everett residents. Otherwise, we lose them and they go back into the funding pool. So we are continuing to try and be mindful of that effort. And that being said, of course, if anybody on the call tonight considers or is ever interested in home funds or CBG funds, please reach out to the city staff to do so. But hopefully, for some reason, we just haven't had a lot of applicants for that. Hopefully, we continue to see that in the future, or can see that picking up in the future. All good questions. The only, if there are any other questions from committee members, the only thing I will add is that typically, so we can see here that we have still a gap of about $189,000 still remaining for non-public service fund commitment. If the committee were to adopt all the funding recommendations that have been presented on the screen, if you don't, you know, then, then that means that number may actually go up from $189,000. Regardless, what we want to try and do here is also understand that these funds can be used for the City of Everett as the direct recipient to go out and use these funds for other improvement projects by other departments. The most important thing, though, that we have to be mindful of is to prevent what's called duplication of benefits. And so when we look at using these non-public service funds for capital improvement projects in our community, we just have to make sure that, you know, okay, if we're, if we're looking at, if we talk to parks and parks wants to prioritize a pedestrian connection somewhere, we have to make sure that that wasn't already budgeted in the city's budget previously. It has to be something that has not been already set aside for public funds. So any funds remaining, if the committee has this desire, any funds remaining can be used to talk to other departments to see if there's anything from bus transit expansions or bus stops to be installed, to park benches, to sidewalk improvements. We can take the public infrastructure, public facility priority still and just have that be a city-led effort instead of a community-led effort. Otherwise, if we don't decide to do that, then we will still leave $189,000 on the table to be used, but that is, again, up to the committee to help guide that funding recommendation. So that's the last thing I have to add to this slide.
Okay.
Vicky?
All right. So any additional questions for non-public services? Great. Okay, so before, I was going to say, before you go to that.
Okay.
Because we're now getting to the funding source that is the most difficult because we have a lot of requests and not enough funds. These are the CBG Public Services. We had funding requests that totaled over $390,000, and we have $130,000 to allocate. So that means there's over $260,000 that we are not able to fund. So there's, there are, and there were very strong applications, and it's always difficult to stretch these dollars as far as we would like. But we did, and the committee, based on the scores, there was a lot of emphasis towards housing. And we can, if you want to go ahead and move on to that, we will get to, get some of that. So we have recommended, so ARC, they serve persons with disabilities, and they provide rental and utility assistance in addition to systems navigation. And so we have recommended that they receive a $20,000 award. Hand in hand, they also, they have administered rental assistance. They have a grant for this current program year, and then they also helped administer COVID-related rental assistance. And so we recommended that they be funded at $20,000. Snohomish County Legal Services has been funded in the past as part of the Housing Justice Project, which provides free legal services to aid in evictions to prevent homelessness. They do a lot of other things, but anyway, we are, they also help the city adhere to the Fair Housing Compliance that HUD requires. So we have recommended that they receive their full ask of the $19,000. And then the last one is YWCA, and they are looking to administer rental assistance. They also were effective at administering rental assistance during COVID, so they had some funding through our CBG CB dollars. And staff is recommending that they be funded at $30,000. So moving down to public services, there are, again, a lot of great programs for mental health courses and other important programs. And we, some of the feedback as far as mental health courses and Housing Hope is that some of the committee members felt that the other more intensive interventions that Housing Hope offers might have more impact than the mental health courses. So General Dattman did not receive as high of a score and was not recommended for funding. The Housing Hope Behavioral Health Services, this is for children and families experiencing homelessness and poverty. And so basically, it's staffing and programmatic costs to build out their behavioral health program. And they're looking to recruit a mental health professional to work with children and families. So we did recommend them at their minimum ask of $10,000. For Hope Works, for tomorrow's Hope Childcare, it's a great program. We have provided funding for childcare subsidies in the past. Difficult decision, but we are not recommending funding for that. There is a lot more funding potentially through ARPA funds, even through the county and their, what programs they're implementing that will go to support childcare programs. So another difficult one that we are not recommending for funding is HOMage Meal Delivery Services, a very difficult one to not recommend funding for. They typically have not met a priority, but in the past, we have provided funding for them. They, they also help those who are not eligible for some of the senior food programs, people with disabilities who are not yet 60, but we are not recommending funding at this time. Volunteers of America, their Fair Housing Program, this supports a part-time bilingual fair housing coordinator, and that helps, they, Volunteers of America, this also helps with HUD's fair housing requirements that they have. We have recommended that they receive $16,000 of funding. And then moving on to the final category of homelessness, Cocoon House is currently receiving funds for a behavioral health coordinator for their transitions program, and this would help fund a supervisor and an after-hour supervisor, which is, they're finding there's a lot of need after hours. So staff is not recommending their full amount. We are looking at $15,000 as our funding recommendation.
Yeah, I was just going to scroll down so that we can see, you know, at this point, we had, again, as Vicky mentioned, $391,000 requested and only 130 available. Again, this is where the city recognizes that HUD has limitations, and we are happy to then provide them the human needs funding. But of course, the wonderful balance with this is that there are a lot of agencies that can help carry forward federal compliance. And so sometimes that program may be a better fit for federal funds as opposed to municipal funds, but I just want us to recognize that, you know, while we are capped here, we do have an opportunity to help also public services in another funding opportunity, which the committee will be looking at next month. So you have a little bit of breathing room to be able to look between funding sources.
I was going to say, I was going to go.
Yep, that sounds good.
Before we do that, I'm going to get into the questions that were submitted by the committee during their review and just a couple comments. So there was a specific question for the ARC, and this was emailed to them, and they might be able to address this during the public comment period. Committee member, they were interested in kind of knowing a little bit more about the demand for their services, like how many calls do they get, kind of finding out what the need in the community is for their services. And then another question was wanting to know, what is the alternative housing situation for ARC's clients if they don't get the services? So are they people who are at risk of homelessness, or are they living with others and the services allow them to pursue independently? So a little more clarification on that was requested. In regards to, this would apply to hand in hand and YWCA, there was a comment just that utility assistance has been a major concern expressed to a committee member by low-income community members. And, you know, obviously, the issue becomes even more critical during the cold winter months, so they were liking that there was utility assistance in these proposals. The other one, a question for Snohomish County Legal Services, was how do you make sure you reach those most in need, as it seems the most in need might not know about their offerings, because they might not be well-connected or able to navigate social services? So the question is to Snohomish County Legal Services, do you do any proactive outreach to make sure you are serving the most in need? There was also a request for Housing Hope Behavioral Health Services. Couple of questions that the committee had, also wanting to know, can they tell us more about the demand for their services? And do they have reason to think they will be able to enroll and have sustained participation from children and their families? And then the other question was, can more information be provided on how this would have a more direct impact on homelessness and home insecurity? So that is all the comments and questions for the CBG Public Service Programs. And at this time, if the committee has specific questions or staff that they would like to ask, please ask them now. So Chair, Sue has her hand up.
I guess you're, since some of these got full ask and some didn't, again, the rationale and the ones that you denied.
A lot of it had to do with the scores that they received from the committee. Other things had to do with the priorities, so focusing on, you know, the priorities that were outlined for, for public services. More of the priority was for behavioral health specifically, behavioral health assistance abuse that the committee called out.
No, besides, I mean, what you covered was fine. I mean, besides the balance between the scores that were provided. And again, needing a priority activity, I think the hard, hard perspective on this specific funding pool is that we just always have a higher demand than what's available. So they always have to, you know, and the committee took, for those, for our newer committee members, the committee decided a while ago to take less of a peanut butter approach for funding and more of a significant award approach. For agency compliance, sometimes that actually can be fairly beneficial because, of course, if we give somebody only 3,000 or 5,000 of a federal award, their internal compliance to be able to track that money can sometimes far outsee the grant that we give them. So we want to make sure that we're leveraging the federal dollars appropriately for both the delivery of the service and for the compliance from the agency. So you will see that our floor is right now around $10,000, which is why a lot of the reduced asks are at 10,000, because that's where we've taken the approach of, okay, well, that's at least a baseline to at least establish a good significant award, to have a good leverage and return of the use of funds. But good question, Sue. Are there any other questions?
Chris, Chris Dingle has his hand up, and then we'll get to Michelle.
Okay, you can see that, good.
I can, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question for staff regarding the request for funding for childcare. You'd mentioned there were potentially some American Rescue Plan dollars through the county. I'm just wondering if you can provide any more detail? And I guess if there's, whether or not this is the appropriate time to make an alternative suggestion on any of the funding.
No. Sorry, I was just going to say, we'll get to that when we open up the public discussion. Thanks, Chris. Am I correct in that, Camara?
You are correct. As far as revisiting the funding recommendations that have been provided, yes, the committee will have the ability to have open discussion on that. But to address your first question, I, the Snohomish County has put out a priority for childcare development. I think that right now, that's actually more focused on facility build-out or facility improvements for childcare facilities at this time. I have limited information on that because that is still fairly new in its inception. However, if that's something that the committee would like for us to help circulate later on, the. the Community Development Division with the city can definitely help to do so when the county puts out further information. But since that's a county-led effort, I really don't have too much else besides that. We just know they're setting aside a good significant amount, because the county did extensive outreach for their ARPA funds available through their Office of Recovery and Resilience. And that was one of the high needs that they identified was childcare. Chair, we have a comment from the room, but I know that we also...
I want to take Michelle first, and then we can do the room.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. My question has to do with on the meal delivery services. Is that correct that they received 14,350 last year in that service? And so will them not receiving any funds this year mean that that service will be discontinued? Do we know that?
Yeah, that's a good question for the agency during the public comments.
Okay. And then the other part of my question is, is that I just want to make sure my observation is correct, that the Volunteers of America Fair Housing, their reduced ask was 11,000, and you're recommending 16,000. And the same thing on Cocoon House, that their reduced ask was 10,000 and you're recommending 15,000. So I just want to make sure I'm reading that right.
Correct. Yes, you are reading that right.
Okay. And so, as I understand it, we'll talk the funds in another phase about changing any of them and asking about that. So that's all my questions.
Thank you. And I will take the question from the room.
It was a follow-up question to the one about the childcare. So I was trying to clarify, the other research artifact that may be available is not for services, it's only for...
I think right now it's being prioritized for infrastructure. I don't know 100% if it's not going to include services. Again, that's going to be county-led. So we would be happy to provide more information at a later time. But based on what we know, there is going to be at least a priority for childcare facility development. I just don't know if they're going to include also operational support as well. Chair, we have another question from the room.
Okay.
Follow-up on that. Can their ask be referred to human needs? Or once we have the human needs that are in the middle, is that what, you know, can, because it's a different funding round?
Yeah, no, unfortunately, we cannot have them switch over to the other funding opportunity. We closed, we did close that application, the funding, human needs applications a week or so.
Yeah, recently.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Jen.
Is there a consideration in the future where certain agencies, there could be an overlap to make the period of applications such that if they were denied, they would have the opportunity? I mean, it's too late for this year's funding, but it would seem like for some agencies. And if it's all or nothing in one shot, then, but perhaps, you know, human needs would still help them, but they can't ask because, you know. So I don't know if that's a consideration, or are the timelines too tight to be able to at least get past, you know, because I mean, we're talking a matter of a week here or a few days, you know? I mean, it's a very close overlap here, so.
So if it was unheard, the question from the committee member is, if I'm paraphrasing, so definitely correct me, but the question is, is can we do better alignment of funding opportunities so that if we see that somebody may not be a good fit or may not be awarded under one fund source, that application could be carried forward to another fund source? I will say that staff tried our best this year, actually, to do that. For some of our, again, newer committee members, you may not be aware, but in the past, we have had opportunities where we did closely align review and funding opportunity rollout, so that people could apply to multiple funding sources at one time. We've heard both good and bad from that. We've heard that on the bad side, that requires that agencies are doing a lot of applications at once. On the good side, though, that does allow us to have the flexibility to have the conversation. And the question that got brought up, which is how do we look at considering other funding sources for activities? Moving forward, we do want to try and continue to be better about opportunities where we can work with agencies on a best fit for a funding source, on a best fit for funding opportunities. Whether or not we're going to have that again in the future for next year is really going to be dependent both on how the city is able to make their budget allocations, which is what guides the human needs funds, as well as how maintaining the timeliness that we have to have with the federal compliance. Sometimes that just doesn't always align. But I do hear the question, and I also understand that, of course, that kind of open-mindedness is definitely appreciated by committee members to look and consider. If a award is not a good fit under one source, is there opportunity for a source elsewhere? So thank you for asking that question, and hopefully that gives you what you need for answering everything. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Michelle, do you still have your hand up, or did we? I forgot to take it down. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from committee members? All right, so, Kimbra, unless you have anything else to add, that concludes the staff presentation. And Chair, we can pass it on back to you.
How exciting. Thank you. At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. I require a motion.
Sorry. Now we have the committee funding discussion and draft funding recommendations.
I was jumping ahead. I so apologize.
That's okay. Yeah, so now it's, yeah, the 4:20.
Yeah, which we missed. I skipped that whole part. I'm so sorry. Okay, so at this time, we're going to go to committee funding discussion. And I would like to start with the, that's still not the public hearing part. I'm confused now. Where are we? 4:20. We did questions, but there's more questions. So are these the specific questions we're going to get answered by the agencies?
No, this is when the committee gets to have their funding discussions. We can pull up the funding recommendation chart. The committee can discuss everything. They can say, we want, you know, all money to go to one person or whatever, whatever the committee decides.
Okay, great. That's a good point.
That happens and you have your discussion, then we will open it up for public hearing and organizations can address questions. And then there's the opportunity where the public hearing closes for the committee to revise.
Revise.
Okay, so I am opening our discussion for the funding recommendations. And how do we want to proceed with moving the pieces around?
We have a proposal from the room?
We do. We did from Chris Dingle. Hands up, and I just called your name.
Thank you, Chair. I did want to ask if the committee would be open to discussing potentially funding at either partial or whole ask for the HopeWorks Social Enterprises childcare request, basing this off of the fact that, you know, all of our housing and utility assistance requesters are wonderful and those are great things to fund. But obviously, if you can't go to work because you can't, don't have childcare, it's going to make maintaining housing that much more difficult. On top of that, COVID pandemic kind of changed the landscape in terms of available childcare and affordability. So I'd be happy to discuss further, but that's my request.
Can I ask how much you would like, so if you could offer an amount, you said a full ask? Or what would your part, if we were going to do a partial, what would you...
Yeah, I mean, I think a partial ask of, you know, they have a reduced ask at 10, which is the same as their full ask, it looks like. So maybe if the agency was available to determine whether or not half of that at 5,000, or if it's necessary to go to 10,000, if there is funds we'd like to pull from another applicant.
So a quick staff interjection, we would need to maintain at least a 10,000 minimum for all of our...
Then I would suggest it a full ask.
And then... We have a response from the room, if that's okay with the Chair?
Yeah.
Okay, so just, because I was going to ask the logistical question. As we go through, we have these split into categories. And so typically, we discuss all the AHTF, you know, the, all the funds within a category against each other, because these funds are encumbered by category. Am I considering that correctly? So for instance, in Chris's proposal, when we get to public services, that will only be weighed against the other four or five people in that category. So for...
No.
No.
Yeah.
Well, no, to all the housing. And I mean, he just says he wants money to come out of housing and to go into the childcare or not between the two, but within this...
So within public service, anything in public service is up for grabs, but...
Including the housing and homelessness, but public service is a little confusing in the middle of the screen. Basically, this whole spreadsheet is, can be considered altogether.
But I mean, we can't pull, I mean, public service funding has to be within that category. So there's like seven or so.
No, no, it can, like I mentioned, so there's three, the three main categories. Public services, I guess you could kind of think, we used to have it titled basic services, because all of these are public services under CDVG. So, but the priority, the housing priority, public service, and then homelessness.
Yeah, okay, we're, it's semantics here. You've got housing, public services, and homelessness. And on your worksheet, you had alumnus public services. But the three that are in that category together, housing, public service, and homelessness, the funds can be shifted amongst those seven or eight. And then the non-public service, there's three, and then the ATF, there's three. So my suggestion was going to be, prior to getting into the specifics, that we go through each category of funds that is lumped together and weigh them against each other and make any changes as we go, since we're not going to be changing between categories. Does that make sense? You know, we start with the, you know, just in the order that we did, the AHTF funds. And there's three under consideration, and we say yea or nay on those. And then we go to the next category, so that we're not just randomly going all over the place.
Chair, did you hear that?
I did hear it, and I understand it up to a point. I think we're just starting backwards, maybe, and move, I mean, starting with the public service funds, and then we'll go the other direction.
Whatever.
Just to keep it where, this one, because this one, I think, is going to have the most discussion, because we have the most need and the least amount of money.
I don't have any problem with starting backwards, just organizing how we do it was my contention, what order.
Right, so I think we just start here, because that seems to be the hot topic for me and us at the moment. And then we'll move in the other, we'll move that way, according to the bottom of the spreadsheet. All right, so we're going to put $10,000 in the tomorrow's Hope Childcare for now.
Have we agreed to that?
No, we're just gonna, we just do it until we all, and then we'll vote on it and decide. But we have to take it from somewhere, though. So where are we going to take it from? Chris?
Thank you, Chair. Based on my understanding of the spreadsheet, the fair housing program and the, via the VOA, and then the Cocoon House Transition Behavioral Health Program are both above the minimum ask. So based on my math here, if there was five from each of those programs, that would meet the 10 minimum requirement for the childcare program.
Okay. Okay, so does anybody else, any other committee member have something they would like to adjust in this part of our funding pool?
Committee member Molly has her hand up.
Hey, Molly.
Hi. So one of the things I noticed was that YWCA is the only one that's below its minimum ask. It was also one, the second most highly rated. So I have a couple of competing thoughts. One of them is, if we're not even going to give them their minimum ask, and maybe they made that their minimum, it's not worth it to them to, for all the compliance below that, then maybe we don't give them anything and we separate it out among the others. Or we give them their minimum ask and then have the opposite problem of needing to figure out where it comes from. I have a slight preference for the former to try to consolidate more funding in fewer places, even though I think it was my highest rated thing. And one of the reasons related to that is that it didn't receive funding last year, and so it wouldn't be felt as a budget cut as it would to other organizations. And for these nonprofits, you know, a budget cut could even, $10,000 could be really difficult. So I don't have a concrete proposal, but just wanted to enter those ideas up there as competing issues.
Thank you for that perspective. I also want to remind us, as we're having this conversation, if I'm allowed to do this, gosh, I hope so, is that we have a list of priorities. And I think that was part of how we were, the scoring was encouraged to happen, is based on the priority, the list of priorities. So that may be why some things got more funding and other proposals got less or no funding. Anyway, just reminding us of that as well. Is there any other comment about the YWCA getting less than their low, their reduced ask?
We have a comment from the room.
Okay, room?
Yeah, Sue. The, given that the rental assistance is directly aligned to a priority with no question and the highness of their score, I would be hesitant to give them, not give them their ask, even though they didn't have an award in the past, because rental and utility assistance during these times when now the eviction helps are being lifted and there's an increased chance in homelessness. And while having been a single parent in the past, the childcare issue is well-understood. But it still would seem that rental assistance is still a pretty high priority. And I would rather give them 30 than eliminate their ask, especially since we can't put them into another funding pool later on. That's a significant amount of money not to be able to give them. So I would be hesitant to take them out of that pool, because that is a very high need that aligns closely with what we have set as our priority.
Thank you. Chris?
Thank you, Chair. I'm curious if staff can provide insight into different communities, which the various different housing grant funding requesters would be targeting. As an example, if there were any, any, you know, ARC, HAN, Snohomish County, or YWCA is targeting aid to veteran community, is targeting aid to immigrant community, et cetera, down the line, and see if that, if we want to parse money out in that way.
That's a good question. We did, we have not, so in the past, the committee has pulled demographic consideration with funding recommendations. We have actually moved away from that practice. For this one, I can't, I don't think that there is a specific group that is being served by the YWCA funds. To my recollection, however, again, the agency might be on the call with us, and so they can definitely help to get more insight for that. In the past, everything has just been whoever was impacted by COVID was worked through. Sometimes the 211 system, sometimes through other referrals, was able to obtain help. How this agency plugs into their connections for helping people for rental and utility assistance may be a good question for them to answer during the public comment portion of this. Unless, Vicky, can you think of anything for that specific ask?
Well, for YWCA, I mean, part of their mission is working with marginalized communities and lifting up... So they do have a focus. It's not exclusive and it's not necessarily to immigrant communities or specific. They, so, and I know Hand in Hand, they do a lot of work in the Casino Road area. So they work with a lot of the Hispanic population. They've also Marshall Lee's population.
Correct, it's become a big one this time. And then to that extent, ARC, of course, with their focus for them to save persons.
Right, and then ARC, Casino, to save persons.
Definitely three different.
Correct, so we had somebody say, so it's definitely three different focuses. And that would be, that would be about right. We have one that may be, I want to say more general base. I don't even know if that's right to really kind of call the YW program a little bit more generalized. But Hand in Hand is focused on the community in South Everett. ARC, disabled persons. Hand in Hand a little bit more broad in both of those. But again, the agencies might be on the call and help to provide more clarification.
Thank you. Is there, are there any other comments or adjustments that committee members would like to make at this time?
Yes, we have another comment.
Okay.
Sorry to have so many comments, but the rest of you are shy. With regard to looking at minimum asks versus recommendations, for instance, Hand in Hand, we're allocating more than their minimum, but considerably less. And given the high need in that area, the high, extreme high crime rate in the Casino Road area, that just looking at the minimum reduced ask doesn't always tell the whole picture. So I mean, we're already reducing them by quite a bit. And I mean, most times in all of the years of doing this, very few agencies will turn down any amount that we can give them if, if it meets their floor threshold. So I would rather, for instance, give them 20,000 than put it down to 10 because that was their minimum ask. So I, on the first one, that category, I personally am comfortable with leaving them the way they are because we're already significantly reducing them. And, you know, it's, it's a devil's choice on the ones below. Because, Chris, your point is well made with the childcare. But then the homage, the homage program for the meals, and I feel kind of the same way about. And yet, it, it's hard to know which, which thing not to fund because we're already underfunding them by a lot. But so, but I just would not recommend changing too much on the up above portion because we've already pretty much slashed them.
So Chair, at this point, we've had a consideration for the staff recommendations for the housing section of the public service applications to be moved over to the CAC funding recommendations.
Correct. Should we take a vote, do we take a vote on that or?
You don't need to take formal action on it. Just if, if there's a general consensus to move it over, we can do so. And then as you continue to get answers questioned, or questions answered, it's getting late, questions answered by organizations, then you can change that. But let's not take any formal action. We can just, if there's a general consensus, if everyone wants to nod or give a thumbs up, that yeah, it looks like we can carry over staff recommendations, we will do so if that is the consensus.
Unless I hear otherwise, I will say that, yes, there, I think we have a general consensus.
Wait, sorry. Does that include what's in green, those changes in green or?
No. Just for the top housing component. So at this point, what this will look like, and sometimes we just go ahead and do this so that everybody can kind of see what this looks like and to continue to get this moving.
So can I, I don't quite agree with that. Can I add something?
Yeah, at this, it's good.
Yeah, so there's only one on here of all of them that got, gets its full request, which is the legal services 1915. Their delta between their full request and reduced ask is pretty small, it's only $4,000. If you needed to find $4,000 to go somewhere else, that seems to me like the best place to take it from because they would be only 5,000, only 4,000 short of their full ask and still getting their full reduced ask. So just a possibility of reduce that to 15, we could get 4,000 to work with somewhere below if we want to do that, for example, childcare or some of the other programs that people.
So is there a consideration to move the SCLS award from 19 to 15?
Chris?
Thank you, Chair. My question would be if that changes at all the calculus transitioning 19 to 15 and putting that, say, with the YWCA to get them closer to their minimum ask, if that in any way contributes to their ability to accept that?
That would be a good question that the agency can answer during the public comment period. At this time, knowing that we still have the ability for agencies to provide clarification on questions, how does the committee feel about moving this or keeping it?
I suggest we keep it until we get to the public discussion period.
Okay, so we still, we have 21,000 that still is remaining for the committee to allocate. We did not carry over the 10,000 for the behavioral health position. I don't think so, no.
What, when he did the, the childcare, where did those, where were you envisioning those funds coming out of again, Chris?
There.
VOA.
Oh, Cocoon House.
And Cocoon House.
Okay, so giving Cocoon House.
Yes, this, 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 yep, I know what's going on. This is not including this guy. And all your money's on. So at this point, how does the committee feel about what's currently on the screen?
Well, both VOA and Cocoon House have massive fundraising abilities. So allocating some of their money for the childcare, which would assume have a much smaller base of fundraising, it would seem like it would be worthy of consideration.
I just feel bad about the meal delivery service program.
Me too.
I, yeah, I just do. But, you know, we can just keep trying to rob Peter to pay Paul out of all of this money. And I just, I, I don't, I don't see a way out other than, you know, take it from childcare. But again, it's a very much needed program as well, so. Michelle?
I can't hear you.
I'd like to hear from the agency on their alternatives to fund the meal delivery service because homage has, you know, a significant budget and significant ability beyond some of these other agencies also. So maybe if we could hear from them how they're going to address it without funding.
Okay.
And then revisit it back when we're, before we finalize.
For public discussion, okay.
Yes.
And you should put your hand down. Leah, oh, wait, Leah's not a community member.
Yeah, Leah is with Homage Meal Delivery Services, but well.
Yeah, I would can't. Right, we're not open for public discussion quite yet.
Chair, if there, if there are no more committee members wishing to have further discussions on this sheet, I would suggest we continue to move forward for the sake of time and then revisit the sheet following agency response.
Correct, I agree. Thank you. So we are going to close, I'll go to this page now.
I just went with it.
Okay, how does the committee feel about this page? I like it.
Yeah, we have enough money and we have enough funds and we don't have to reduce anything. So it seems like there's nothing discussed.
Okay, if there, I'll put the allocations over here. The only thing is that I would ask that if the committee wants to identify that any residual funds or contingency funds actually, let me remove this, actually get considered for city projects. What we can do is provide a clarifying, that they could be prioritized for low, I mean, they have to be used anyway for low income purposes, but low income census tracts. But we work with other city departments in identifying opportunities for using those funds. That's my consideration back to the committee because we are still leaving $189,000 on the table.
Chris, you have a comment question?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to just put forth a motion to do exactly that. And I know that one of our priorities was sidewalk and transit access and improvements. So I'm not aware of whether or not the city has a project that could potentially fit with those funds. But I would like to do just as staffs just suggested.
We have a response to the comment in the room?
Well, and we recently sustained significant damage around the city from the recent storm. So perhaps there are low income people who had impact from trees, et cetera, that don't have funding, that that might be a consideration as well. I don't know, it just, you walk around Everett, there's a lot of tree damage and not everybody has adequate insurance to cover such things.
I'll just remember would the funds not be available until July?
Oh, okay, so that's.
There's some supplemental funds.
Yes, with these being the supplemental funds, these actually can be available immediately with the residual pot that's left over.
Well, just something to add to your city's wish list, it's just a consideration.
Correct, I mean, I think that what we're kind of really getting at is that the committee can really kind of look and see where the needs are at with this. What I will also kind of inform the committee is that when we did our massive public engagement for the consolidated plan, it did include touching base with various city departments, anywhere from police to libraries to public works to transit. So there is always, I think, a punch list of ideals, that wish lists of things that the departments would love to be able to get, have facilitated for the city that just sometimes never get to make the budget. The moving target on this is meeting them at a point where the department can pick up the capacity in order to be able to do the work and also making sure that the funds have not already been committed. The nice thing is that the city budget cycle was just, is in its final phasing right now. And so we can take this opportunity to meet with departments after the first of the year and say, hey, we have about $189,000 that we can use to meet any of your high demand projects. If the committee at this point would like to have that focused on sidewalk improvements, on homeowner rehab, on, although the homeowner rehab would probably end up deferring to CHIP, on public works, infrastructure improvements, on park facilities. We can have that consideration here at this time. Or we can just leave it for, you know, whoever has the capacity to be able to use these funds can do so. I mean, the, the range of what they can be used for is vast. I think it's just the, a question really is, is would the committee like for that to be something to be able to be considered with these funds? And it sounds like there's been one committee member that suggested that we do take up that effort. And we have another comment from the room?
No, not.
No comment?
Yes.
Just support, just support for the consideration.
So unless we hear any negative comments or somebody doesn't want to do that, I'm going to say that we would like to do that.
Is this verbiage okay for, for the committee to consider?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, I'm speaking for the committee, but if somebody wants to say no, please feel free.
Okay, so if it's okay, we will move forward with the home.
Yes. Another happy sheet. I say that's a good move over.
Yeah. With the effort to get more viable projects in the future.
Yeah. Okay, Chair, is it okay to move on to the last page?
I think it's great.
Fantastic.
Super fantastic. And another happy page. Well, almost happy. I think Sue had a, oh, this is where the question started about how we were determining these things. Okay. Does the committee have any questions, comments, or desire to change any of these figures? Okay. I think we're good to establish these funding recommendations at this time.
We may have a consideration from the room.
Okay, they're pondering.
Oh, well, I was just wondering whether, given that Cocoon House again has pretty good support network of funding and their minimum ask was only 20, if perhaps some portion of Cocoon could be put up to Interfaith to get a little closer to their ask.
I actually support that. I think that's a good suggestion because Cocoon House, we often fund at full capacity.
Yes.
And they do have a really big base. And so I do, I think that's a great suggestion.
So I guess it's a matter of.
How much?
You just make it their full amount.
Well, I would recommend a $5,000 shift so everybody gets a little something. I mean, so it's not the full.
Are you saying to make Cocoon 41.5 and make?
Yeah. 65.
65?
Yeah.
Yeah, in this case, it, it's still enough of a, close enough to the full ask that it's not going to hinder the programs for which we're reducing.
Okay, and we're giving them more than we did last year, so that feels good to me.
So other people?
I can support that.
Oopsie.
Okay, at this point, let's just do one quick technology check. We'll make sure everything's good and then we will get it ready to open up for public hearing. Okay, I think that we're okay.
My heart, my heart.
At this time, Chair, I'm going to give it back to you for the next item on the agenda.
Can I make a recommendation that you do control save and save that?
Oh, yeah, no, good call.
Are we okay?
Yes.
Okay. We are now moving on to opening the public hearing, if I can pull myself together. I need a motion and a second, please, to open this portion of our meeting.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Our, we are now open to address the questions that have been posed by our agencies. I think we should take the ones that we know from, that the committee members asked first and have those be addressed and then move down to, on to the next set of questions, if there are any. So Vicki, I probably need you to reiterate what those questions were that came in the applications.
Well, and since Mr. Dean is here in person, perhaps we could allow him to answer questions first in case he doesn't want to stay for the whole thing since he.
Well, okay, I, I don't know who's where, so just kind of in the dark here.
Yeah, well, well, he came in person, so just.
Well, that's great.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, great.
I'd be happy to. My name is Jim Dean and I'm the Executive Director of the Interfaith Family Shelter here in Everett. And I want to thank you for this opportunity and thank the committee first off for the work that you do. This is all time that you could be doing. This is all time that you could be doing something else, so thank you very much for the hard, difficult work that you have to do. There were a couple of questions that were in here that I want to address, and then just a little bit of information, not much more than that. The question had to do with one of the positions that are a part of the application. If you note, the application has, I think, four positions that are partially funded by this particular grant. And one was the resident skills coordinator. The resident skills coordinator, the focus of the work that they do is really a lot on life skills. We find that families that want to continue to be successful after they leave the shelter oftentimes find themselves stuck with several skills in life that don't seem to work. Many of them have to do with the things that you think about, just everybody knowing. Things like cleaning, things like doing the chores, things like mowing the lawn, of which they need to be taught to do very often. But even more so, what we find out, where the deficiencies are, has to do with nutrition and cooking and in skills that have to do with maintenance of their life. And so that's what this particular person does, is basically works with, in our agency, all of our people work to help support the operation of the, of the agency. So they, each family cooks a meal a week, and every, every family has a chore to do. And in that process, often they have to be trained to do that work. Now, the specific question had to do with financial training, job training and hiring. And in that process, we do have another position that's being asked for funding for this, which is the shelter case manager. They do specifically work on budgeting. That's the first thing they do, is sit down with them and work out what's their budget look like for their life and figure out how can they do that. In that process, also in looking at the 90 days that they're with us at the shelter, if we don't change something in their life that got them homeless, then the chances of them being successful after they leave the shelter is pretty slim. And so that has to do then with, do they need additional training, like a training program that's short-lived or a longer-term college training program? And the other part has to do with changing their work. You'd be surprised that about 85% of the people who live in our shelter have full-time jobs, somebody in the family has a full-time job. But oftentimes, it's improving that situation that's going to make it whether they can live or not live there. So that's the work that they do there. Any amount here, and the, the final thing that I want to point out is that of the funding that we didn't spend moving forward, that was funding for people who, we had open positions. If you were in 2021 anywhere, working in human services, there were times when you couldn't spend the money because you didn't have somebody in that spot. And so that's where that funding got carried forward to this one. And those, fortunately, hiring in this area has gotten better, not great yet, but it's gotten better. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. The next question or person who would like to answer the question posed to them?
Chair, I would suggest, since we have a list of prepared questions, we could go through by agency as they're listed on Vicki's sheet. So Vicki, after Interfaith, who's an agency that should be pulled up?
Homage Minor Home Repair, and this is a CDBG non-public service cabinet. And we have Julie Rose here. Julie, do you want me to repeat the questions or do you?
I've got them here for you guys, and I'll be able to summarize them as well.
Perfect.
Thank, thank you, Vicki, and thank you to both the staff and the committee for recommending this program continue forward. We recognize how fortunate we are. Seeing some of your earlier slides where Everett has put their funding priority to 78% for housing, this minor home repair program you're going to hear here in the next few minutes is critical to keeping people in their homes and leaving this as your housing stock. So the first question was, what is your most commonly requested repair? And as I list this, I would like each of you guys to think of a low-income friend or family member and wonder what they would be doing within this situation. So with plumbing repairs, specifically getting clean water, having a major sewer clog, leaking pipes that are ruining the house, burst pipes during the cold spells, a broken faucet from kitchens to showers where you can't bathe any longer, no hot water or leaking water heaters, that is nearly 60% of the work that we do. And I think all of you in your own homes can recognize that plumbing is critical to safe living. All right. The second question is, can state or federal programs be leveraged to improve efficiency or accelerate decarbonization? So Homage receives CDBG funds from the City of Everett. Originally, those are coming from the HUD, so they are federal funds. We are currently leveraging additional CDBG funding. We get CDBG funding from the City of Marysville, and we get City of, I'm sorry, Snohomish County funding, as well as City of Bothell funding. By combining these funds, instead of just the 185 from Everett, where we would have one repair tech and one van and one person in the office, we can combine these funds. We have over $1 million, and now we can have six and a half repairmen, seven vans, and three people in the office to ensure that all of this work gets done. So hopefully, that's been kind of helpful. Do you have any questions on this? Okay, I'm going to pass it off to our program manager, Cheryl Cadden, who's with us.
Get to your.
Cheryl, you're still needed.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to allow us to answer the questions that you have. And the last one that you had was, without these services, the occupants of these homes could easily become homeless. And your, your question was, it's not quite clear how the people could easily become homeless if they don't get the home repairs. Could you provide more rationale? And what that comes down to basically is uninhabitable living conditions without any working sewer, clean water, no heat, active roof leaks creating mold in the house, and no power. That creates uninhabitable living conditions, and our clients are homeless. People need ramps to get in and out of their homes. EMS, so many times, have to be the people that carry them in and out. Disabled and needs, or disabled need low-rise steps. Again, without these, they could not enter and leave their homes, so they can become homeless. And mobile homes, parks, and Section 8s, people with rent help, they have to abide by certain, certain CCNRs. If, if we're not there to help them get their homes into certain conditions, they will be evicted, and they'll be out on the streets and they'll be homeless. So I hope that answers the questions as to how the lack of our services would put some people out on the streets. Thank you.
I, I'd like to add, I've got two quick quotes from clients. "As a disabled, low-income person, I would be homeless if it wasn't for all the help you have provided. Emergency repairs, a severely leaking roof, broken plumbing, and safe exits for my house. Thank you so much. I can't express how appreciative I am for all that minor home repair has done with me and allowed me to stay in my home." And just one more short one. "I don't know what I would do without you. Seriously, I wouldn't be able to live here in my home. I'd probably be living in a paper bag on the street. All my life, I've never asked for help." So just kind of some front row seats from the people we're helping.
Thank you. Thank you both for your time and clarification.
Thank you.
Do you want to see those questions? Okay, so the next one is Snohomish County Legal Services. Do we have Representative or two?
Thank you. Hi, Dave. Yes, yes, I'm here. Thank you so much for inviting us. Thank you for the staff and the committee. I know it's a, a difficult position. First, I wanted to ask, is there a time limit? The question that we, three minutes? Okay, well, I better hurry up. Okay, so first, I have shared materials that I can forward on to the specific question, specifically to the outreach. But first, I'd like to address the comment. I hope this is the right venue, but I just wanted to quickly say that we are operating on a very slim ask, and although we can do less, that would involve reducing services. So just this year, year-to-date, we've opened 2,000 cases, and 30, 36.7% of that is Everett. Okay, so before, so I'll get into that, and I'll talk about how, what we're doing and the outreach. So I define, so outreach, how do we serve the most, those that need our services the most? That is important, that is pivotal to what we do at our organization. And I define it as education and accessibility and advocacy. So with our organization, we develop informational materials, and we do presentations very similar to, I'm asking, this is, I'm answering a question, but it goes into our presentation. So the one that had the question, please invite us to speak in more detail, not in under three minutes, but we develop materials and we present to community partners, our clients, and the community in general, specifically about the housing laws and our services. We also, a lot of our work is through clinics, and we offer clinics in different formats. And this is related to outreach, because what we found through the pandemic is, although a lot of our work is housing-related and family law-related, we've had to implement more general legal clinics around the county, two of which are housed in Everett. And these are designed to be low barriers, so one of which is the Everett Recovery Cafe. So we bring these services into the community. And then another one is the Everett Public Library. And these partnerships in the community are important because, for example, the public library, it's on a major line, they have access to computers, printers, and the library is a safe space for them to come, they have access to internet. So those are considerations, and we go out into the community, and we have these legal clinics throughout the community. We also have specific clinics. We have our Housing Justice Project Clinic down at the courthouse. That's an in-person clinic, four days a week. We also have a virtual clinic for those that can't make the clinic. And then we have extended Housing Justice Project Service Clinics at the Carnegie Resource Center, that's twice a month, and in addition to our other clinics. But those are our housing-specific clinics throughout the county. So specifically in Everett, and working with our community partners. So a big part of our work is, we work with the Volunteers of America Dispute Resolution Center in our eviction resolution pilot program. So we have a referral relationship where we actually represent tenants in mediations and meeting confers to settle and negotiate a lot of these issues before getting to court, because we've found that these force moves or evictions really play a huge impact on the physical and mental health of our clients who are in crisis. So a huge part of what we're do, we do is preventative work, getting out there and reaching our clients and educating them before they self-evict. You know, we do serve undocumented or the undocumented immigrants or those that may not reach out for services because of different barriers. They may be victims or survivors of domestic violence, they may not speak English, and so they may not necessarily, we have these different formats so that they can engage and access our services. And then the last thing is advocacy. With our courthouse, with our presence in the community and advocating, we do reach out. So we have, we are actually part of the Snohomish County Standing Order, where we are given notice of filings or what, when a certification is issued so that a case can go to court, so that we can outreach. We send postcards out to the community because you, you would not, you may not understand that some people don't have phones, they don't have access to internet. We've had people come in and with the postcard in their hand. We also outreach on social media, because we also find that that is an avenue that people like to get educated or to connect to services as well. And, and all of our formats are in-person, hybrid, remote, connecting with community partners. We work with, we have direct referral relationships with Connect Casino Road. We have a twice-a-month clinic with domestic violence services. And that's just a few of the examples. I know that I went on more than three minutes. And I do have our outreach materials and all of that prepared, if I can send it along.
Thank you so much. That was really insightful. Thank you.
Okay, so our next question is for Housing Hope, for their behavioral health services for children and families experiencing homelessness and poverty. So I think I saw a Housing Hope representative on here earlier. Someone from Housing Hope still here?
Hi. Hi, I'm here from Housing Hope. This is Akila Sakway.
Okay, and I think Holly is here as well.
Okay, I'll let, I'll let her defer to her. Holly, are you there?
Yeah, go ahead, Akila.
Okay, well, thank you so much for this opportunity to just talk a little bit about what we offer. Let me, sorry, I didn't, I thought I turned on my camera. Apologize. It's nighttime, but I'm still in my daytime condominium. Do you like it? So, yeah, so I have the questions and regarding, I don't know if you want me to just read it quickly, just about the demand for our services and how we will sustain participation. So for the Housing Hope sites, we, there have been, you know, just a number of people, over 286, that have reported, and this is in the last fiscal year, mental health conditions. And just with mental, mental illness, addiction, the biggest way, the best way of gaining, allowing someone to gain access to our services is to remove barriers. And so how we intend and how we have been engaging our, our participants and our residents and clients is by removing barriers to services and allowing them just free behavioral health services. We, we do intend on building a Medicaid or billing Medicaid, but that is not something that will be a barrier to them. If they don't have insurance, they will be able to gain access. So that accessibility is, is really, really big in behavioral health. Boots on the ground is big. So just engaging our, doing outreach, engaging our residents, and just making behavioral health available, you know, for people who have tried to get behavioral health services, who even have commercial insurance. You, I don't know, you know, you've heard of long wait lists, just, just lengthy wait times, sometimes months. I've worked in private pack, practice where I've had clients say, I've been waiting for like two months to see someone. And that's really sad. And so for this extremely vulnerable population, it is critical to remove all barriers. And, and so again, that accessibility, making it, you know, just we offer brief therapy, we offer individual therapy, and, and then just services for families and children and coaching services. So just really doing a wraparound that is accessible with minimal paperwork. And that, that's another thing, when you're fatigued, when you're a parent, if you're in, you know, if you're in recovery, life is new and it's full of stressors. So just keeping that paperwork barrier very low is extremely important. Does that answer the question?
I think so. If you want to address how, how the behavioral health program would have a more direct impact on homelessness and home insecurity.
Right. Yeah, so regarding that, recidivism through jail, prison, homeless shelters, really, really high, and that largely is because of mental illness and just lack, again, of support. So going back to that, the barrier of not getting the help that you need, it, it is very hard to engage someone in addiction, but imagine getting into recovery and not having any support. It is very easy to just go right back into that same cycle of, you know, homeless. It is very easy to just go right back into that same cycle of, you know, homelessness. So, you know, the, the direct impact is that access to behavioral health and making, you know, help supporting their, the individual or the residents of Housing Hope on their journey in recovery and then outreach, really, you know, some of our properties have people, have residents who are in high addiction, but one of the things that is a determining factor in them staying in, in their, without, you know, being evicted or staying in their, in their home is just being, being present and having rapport with them, having that consistent presence with them and building a relationship and engaging them in, you know, therapeutically. You may not begin actual sessions right away, but the behavioral health piece, that rapport building is, you know, by and large, the biggest part of behavioral therapy. So just having that presence and engaging them helps them to, you know, just decide, you know, maybe I want to get into recovery. And I've worked with a lot of people who are in addiction and it takes many conversations to get them into recovery and sometimes they relapse, but just having that sense of, you know, what I can do it because this person believes in me, helps them to stabilize. So it, the, the behavioral health is not necessarily like a resource piece. We can't guarantee that you're, they're going to get money or anything, but we can guarantee just that healing journey begins. And so that, once that healing journey begins with their mind, their psyche, their emotions, then they're more than likely able to stabilize and retain, hold on to, you know, a job, hold on to their apartment. So it really impacts behavioral health, it really does. I've worked with people in my, in past roles who've experienced serious mental illness and some people in addiction do have serious mental illness, so psychosis, schizophrenia, hearing voices. There's no way that they can sustain a, an apartment or anything without wraparound behavioral health, it's just impossible. They need that support team, they need behavioral health to help them and journey with them until they are, you know, capable, you know, of, of, of doing well. And I'm not speaking about SMIs, MI, people who have serious mental illness tend to need that journey just in general, period, just because it's a illness that gets managed. But, yes, so it's critical, behavioral health is critical because it helps to, it's, it's that stability piece.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate you responding to those questions, that's helpful.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, our next one is for the Arc of Snohomish County. So I saw Representative Jamie.
Yes, thank you. I also have a coworker here, but I think I can answer the questions thoroughly. I'm the executive director for the Arc of Snohomish County and I want to thank the staff and the committee for this time to share what our organization does and what your funds have helped in the past to provide. The first question I was given is the demand for services and how many calls we receive. And I can do some more, I'd be happy to do more digging for more exact numbers for the committee in the future if you'd like, but I was pulling numbers just for this year. For all programs, we have received 186 calls for crisis, housing crisis. So those are people that are at risk of losing their home, received pay or vacate, those types of situations, and 145 non-crisis. So that could be, I don't know how I'm going to pay next month. That could be, you know, an adult with disabilities and the mom is aging and the parent needs to move into assisted living and where is this adult child that needs support going to go, some of that planning. That might not be city of Everett, but I was looking and it looks like about forty percent of our calls is the city of Everett. And so those, those numbers, looking at, I pulled up July, we received 24 calls in July that are city of Everett specific housing calls. And disability, we serve individuals with intellectual and developmental disability. Disability is so diverse, so our calls range from an adult that is living on their own, maybe their own low-income apartment, to a family that has, is trying to care for their loved one in their home, that their child could be under the age of 18 or they could still be housing their adult child with them. So numbers are a little tricky and our calls are, this is why numbers are hard, because those numbers are the touch, somebody that calls and we're going to provide case management. But case management can take weeks to months sometimes because we're not just directing to a service. Our employees, our staff will take time to call other agencies if we need to. If we're not the best place for that person to receive services, we'll call on behalf of individuals. We use all modalities of communication, so I'm working with a client right now that reached out on Facebook and for some support. And so we've been going back and forth, what's a good time for you, how can I support you? And, and some of it's been social media, I've been working to try to connect to the person by phone. But our services are really imperative and those numbers are also the callers that have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And we probably receive double the calls for those that don't fit in the disability categories, but we're, our name starts with A and I think two, one, one, you know, when they give the list sometimes, A's at the top. And so we get a lot of calls for veterans, for other people in, in our community. And we try really hard to not just say, nope, you don't, you know, we can't help you, but instead we listen for a bit and try to direct them to the community organization, our community partners that might best serve them. So we also have our staff attending those meetings in our community to make sure that we're speaking on behalf of individuals with developmental disabilities because often they are a quieter voice, they don't, aren't able to attend as many meetings and advocating both at community meetings and also legislatively for some more funding for those families and individuals. The second question, is there alternate housing or what it would be an alternate housing situation for families? And are they at risk for homelessness? And I would say a majority of the clients that we serve in any of our programs are at risk for homelessness. People with developmental disabilities often are stuck in poverty because they are at risk of losing medical benefits is what they're really worried about, if, if they lose the social security benefit. They're not able to save much, they have to keep less than $2,000 in their bank account, so you can't save for a crisis. So a lot of our individuals and families are just one crisis away from homelessness. We do our best when a caller comes in to talk about other programs. Of course, our first thing is to keep them in their home, but we also go into further. Can they save, are they working? Can we link them to services to help them find employment? Are they in the DDA system, which is Developmental Disabilities Administration, which could support them in other ways? So we're always asking those questions and, and looking, trying to build independent living skills for those that are living on their own. And, you know, is there a different budgeting we can help support them with so they don't get in that situation? We have, do have some that live with their families, so, but often those families are in crisis as well. If the disability is more significant and a family is caring for them, we, we heard today even that childcare is difficult and it's almost impossible if you have a child with a developmental disability that experiences medical challenges or behavior issues. So many of our families are, if they're lucky enough to be a, a two-parent household, one typically cannot sustain work and needs to be a stay-at-home parent to help support those needs. So, so they are, families are at risk of homelessness and so are individuals that are trying, and, and like I said before too, we also have the aging, people that are aging, maybe they've always supported their loved one with a developmental disability and have tried to do it all along and suddenly their health starts sliding and they're saying, what do I do now? Where are they going to go? Who's going to support them? So we offer a lot of assistance, talking about different options, questions to ask if they're looking for different housing, things like that. And same with the person that has a disability, what do you, what type of housing are you looking for and make calls for affordable housing? So every situation looks different, disability is so diverse and we do a, a lot of work just meeting that individual where they're at, supporting them in different modalities that might work for them. And then relationship is really important too. Sometimes people we serve aren't saying that they don't have food in their fridge or anything. And so through our other groups, through the Arc, we might have us, another staff member say, can I, you know, can you talk to this person and can we see how we can support them better? I just heard that they don't have much food left for the month or different things, housing situations. And we are happy to have our community partners because we do offer referral and warm handoffs. We don't give phone numbers as much as we can. We try to do some of that, digging into resources for them on, on behalf of them when at all possible.
Thank you very much, Jamie, that was very thorough and very helpful, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. So we do, planning commission is at 6:30.
We need to, yeah, we need to continue to move through the public hearing component of this and then if, we have to switch over, for those of us, or for those that are watching this on Everett TV or virtually or otherwise, we may have to stop broadcasting at 6:30 if that occurs. This is still recorded and still will be available for public comment. My first request to the committee is that we do our best to move through the public hearing component of the portion of the meeting and then if we need to do the action after that's been closed and we can do that, that will be available for public comment for 30 minutes. But again, let's prioritize our time to continue with the public hearing and moving through all participant questions, so.
And we just have one more official question and then, so this is for Child Drive. So I know Terry, I think, was available. And Terry, hello, could you just address a little bit more? I mean, it's kind of a moot point because it looks like potentially you're getting your full ass, but just maybe talk a little bit more about why there was more prioritization for the flooring versus the security badges.
Great, and thank you guys for your hard work. What everybody has said, I did ditto. The real reason that we, it wasn't as much a prioritization as it was pulling a project off that was a complete package project that we could go to other places for funding. So the security badge project could be a standalone project. And if we had done it the other way where, say, we didn't change the flooring in part of another building, that seemed like a harder project to get funded from a, a different source. Luckily, we get to do both, so that, thank you very much. And the really good news is the security badge project doesn't take very long, so it'll, it can be completed in the first month of the work that we do. The other reason is that the vinyl plank flooring, even though you might think of it as something to, you know, improve the, the appearance of the buildings, which it will, but it also provides increased health and safety issues. We aren't having, we are, it is much easier to keep clean, it doesn't tear and create, you know, tripping hazards like carpet can. And if we still had carpet in part of the building, once we did vinyl plank, then we would have to have multiple cleaning abilities, you know, different equipment and having vinyl plank throughout will let us really increase efficiency around maintenance and janitorial, which will save us money to go towards more programming. So those were sort of the, our thought processes when we were, when we were trying to figure that out. And I'll be quiet now so everybody can get done and go home quicker. But thanks again for the opportunity to talk with you guys and for the hard work that you do.
Thank you, Terry. So that is it for the official questions that we had and then we can continue if there are public comments from other organizations or anyone else who would like to provide a public comment.
Leah.
And please state your name and your organization.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Leah Hammond. I am representing the Homage Nutrition Programs and specifically the Meal Delivery Program. I believe there was a couple of questions that came up earlier that I would like to address. One was kind of around the impact that if we weren't funded, funded at any level, what impact would that have on individuals currently being served? Right now, we do have nine individuals in Everett that are receiving meals through the City of Everett CDBG funding. That currently is the only funding available that, for those individuals. Most of our funding comes through the Older American Act. And therefore, we're not able to provide meals for anyone under the age of 60. So these are folks who meet all of the traditional eligibility criteria for meal services, meaning that they're homebound, meaning that they have either difficulty getting to the grocery store, difficulty preparing food or lack know-how, or maybe some combination, and that they have limited support. However, due to the fact that they're not 60 and older, they don't qualify through Older Americans Act funding. We do try to leverage that funding through philanthropy dollars that are raised or other smaller grants. We currently receive funding for a CDBG funding from the City of Marysville and also CDBG funds from Snohomish County. Unfortunately, we cannot use those funds for Everett residents. I will mention that currently in, for all of our meals, on wheel services, our home-delivered meals, about 30% of our clients reside in the city of Everett, which is about 600 clients. In 2021, we did provide almost 50,000 meals to Everett residents. So we feel that the service is really important for those marginalized folks who don't, don't have other resources and keeping them in their own home and also providing a wellness check each week when that delivery is made and a, a way to stay connected to the community.
Can I ask you a question? Sue Johnson, we often ask, you know, the threshold of $10,000, which is below, let's see, that's below what you said your minimum support level was, but if you were given 10,000, could you prorate the services for at least a proportion of the amount of people, you know, four or five or whatever the number works out to be, or is it 20 or nothing?
Yeah, we could absolutely provide services using $10,000. Again, the, the number of meals would be less and probably the number of individuals would be less. It's a little bit of a moving target with these services because we have folks come to us who are in acute need, maybe they had a surgery and they just need a month of support while they get back on their feet. Other clients might have chronic issues or disabilities where they need continued support. So difficult to provide an exact number of individuals served, but we certainly could utilize that $10,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Dillon has her hand up.
Good evening, everyone. I am Mary Ann Dillon, I'm with the YWCA. There was a question earlier about who the YWCA serves. I can answer that, but with me is Ahelia Grassfield and she also works at the YWCA. So I will talk fast because I realize you're, don't have a lot of time. The YWCA's mission is to going to have a lot of time. The YWCA's mission is to eliminate racism and empower women. We serve those who are the farthest from equity and experiencing the greatest disparity. We target African-American women and girls, women and girls of color, and all those in need. We believe that by targeting those who are farthest from equity, we increase the life and outcomes for all women, and by turn, the broader society. The theory is the rising tide increases all boats. So those who will be receiving rent assistance will be those who are unstablely or tenuously housed, those who are at risk of homelessness or experiencing homelessness, or those who are housing cost burden. Jamie Coons from the ARC did also describe a lot of what the people who are receiving rent assistance from the YWCA would be receiving, those who are low income, one crisis away, needing budget support, and working multiple jobs. You also had another question about what would happen with a reduced ask. We would serve less families with a reduced ask. And I hope I spoke fast enough. Sorry if I stumbled over a lot of words. And thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Yes.
Oh, you're there, sorry.
I'm right here.
Okay. Not seeing other hands raised.
Me either.
Staff, were there any written comments submitted for consideration to be read into the record?
No written comments submitted, read into the record.
Fantastic. Chair, we give it back to you to close the public hearing portion.
Thank you. At this time, I would need a motion and a second to close the public hearing, please.
I move we close the public hearing.
The public hearing is now closed at this time. Thank you. We will now open up the committee discussion and response to the public comments. So what I'm going to do is go down the list of the roll call list. I know I put it here somewhere. There it is. And if you have questions or comments, you can make them. And if you don't, you can just say no, thank you. Sue Johnson?
Well, I'm always for procedure. So I guess my comment would be that we have a number of areas that we have already pretty much agreed upon. So if we can go to the part where we have questions or, you know, that we want to change.
Would you, would you like to have the, the spreadsheet put back up so we can have discussion there? Or what are you proposing?
Yeah. Well, and I'm proposing that we just go through, and then you can roll call, you know, someone could make a motion that we accept it as written. And then you can say, is there any discussion? And if not, we can approve it by subsection. And then that way, we can move through quickly. That would be my suggestion.
So Chair, and what I would ask is that if it sounds like we might have a motion to move past an agenda item and move straight to committee funding recommendation action?
Oh.
If there is, that's, that's fine. That's why we're doing this. If there is no further discussion by committee members, then it sounds like there might be a consideration for a motion. But of course, the committee member that provided that would need to formally make a motion for us to move past this agenda item.
I think that falls on you, Sue, to make a motion.
Well, I guess, are there other people who want to have a discussion before we make that motion? Because I didn't mean to usurp a process necessarily, just, otherwise, I move that we go through and in each section, have our discussion, and then finalize a section. So that way, it'll move quickly because there's only one real section that we have a lot of discussion to still kind of clarify.
In line with this particular agenda item, I just want to say how much I appreciated the agencies and bringing, coming and sticking with us and providing detailed responses for the record. I thought it was very helpful, and I really appreciated it. So, and then looking forward to the next discussion.
So Chair, I just want to let you know that Molly Everhart had to leave the physical meeting, but she's trying to call in, but she's not able to get in. And I'm having trouble finding where she might be to let her into the meeting. So she is attempting to come back into the meeting using our call-in number.
Okay. Do we still have a quorum?
We should still have quorum, yeah. So at this point, there is a motion on the floor to move past this agenda item. Is there a second to support that motion? Or is the motion failing?
Second.
Fantastic. Any opportunity for opposition? Going once, going twice. Chair, if you're okay, then we'll move forward back to committee funding discussion.
Let's do it.
Okay. Let me bring up our Excel sheet, and you guys can tell me where you want to go.
I, I vote, I'm not vote, I recommend that we accept this as is.
For the HTF funding recommendations?
Correct.
Second.
And, oh, and that's what the change, the most recent changes.
Yes.
And then Chair, maybe we need to do a quick voice vote on these so we know that we really have.
Okay.
Everybody, or ask for any nays, so that we're sure that.
Right. I would, I would prefer to just say, are there any nays?
Yeah. So that way, we know for sure that.
Everybody's got a voice. Yeah. Are there any nays to accepting this recommendation? Okay, at this time, I think we have accepted this recommend, funding recommendation. Is there any discussion item on this funding recommendation?
Since we're giving them everything they asked for, I move we accept it.
Second.
Thank you. I, I moved that way. I can't make a motion. So you guys.
You have a motion and a second. So at this point, I would ask.
We are accepting this as a funding recommendation. Moving on to, I hear no nays.
Ditto on non-public service. We have excess funds. So I move we accept it as written.
Second.
With the contingency of, that we discussed earlier of allowing the city to allocate the 189,000 surplus fund, you know, and 737 surplus funds, according to needs that they see fit.
If there are no nays, I, we accept this as a funding recommendation. Next. I'm guessing we have some discussion for this funding call.
I do have, Molly was able to email me a comment that she would like.
Okay.
Okay. So she would vote, she does want the childcare to be funded at $10,000.
Okay.
After hearing from Homage, is there any way we can siphon off 10,000 for them, too? Others' opinions on that, since I dominate the discussion a lot?
This is Michelle, and I, I think we really need to at least get them to $10,000. There doesn't appear to be any other niche funding available to support people, and people would immediately lose services.
Sue, are you speaking? I couldn't hear you.
I'm just looking at the thing closer because I'm trying to do math in my head.
Yeah. So the, the item for discussion then is where does the 10,000 come from? So we're going to, staff is going to put 10,000 in as a placeholder. And then if, I'm so sorry, Sue, but I got to do a quick, there, adjustment there. If we see that, then now we're at a loss or deficit of 10,000. So we have to figure out where to pull 10,000 from to allow for this program to receive funding. So the discussion is where does that 10,000 come from?
We could take five from the Y because they're still getting a higher bill of people in their category.
So the consideration is to take the Y's, YWCA's rental assistance down to 25,000?
Yeah. I have to get somebody else in that category because everybody else is at the $10,000 mark, except for, well, VOA said they needed 11, but we could put them at the 10 threshold because I doubt they would turn that down. They have a lot of funding sources.
So the consideration was to remove $1,000 from VOA's Fair Housing Program. You would still need 4,000 elsewhere. Does anybody else have considerations for the deficiency that we still have? And we are at 5,000 for, that we still need to find from somewhere else?
If, if we're going this route, pulling 4,000 from the Snohomish County Legal Services, which puts them at their reduced ask of 15. But I, I will, yeah.
All, all staff is doing is just providing consideration. You guys can still talk about this.
What, what's the bottom line here so far, Kendra? I can't see the very bottom of the, there we go. Okay.
Zero. Okay.
Okay.
Let me delete these two so that it gets brought up a little bit.
Thank you. Chris, you had some voice you want to?
No, there's no, I mean, I certainly am not opposed to, you know, the, the meal delivery service. You know, I, it's, it's just difficult. It's always just difficult to figure out. Obviously, with housing being such a huge need, I don't want to pillage that too much. That's all.
I can support these changes. This is Michelle.
Yeah.
Is there any other discussion or changes that committee members would like to make at this time?
Well, I think even though we took a try and fund the big projects approach in general, these small projects that they're finding, funding, not funding them would have a very significant effect. And so I think they're worthy of the 10 brand reach that we're trying to give them.
So I'm, I'm gonna do a roll call because I want everybody to have at least a, a voice that feels right to me. So if you have a comment, make one if you, or a question or clarification. If you don't, you can just say no, obviously. So Sue?
Yes. Oh, wait, don't we need a motion? I move that we.
No, I'm not asking for a vote. I just want to make sure everybody's okay with this. Not, like, does anybody want to have any other comment about it?
Okay.
Matt Hassel?
I don't have any other comment. I think the moves that we've made and what's in green now looks good to me.
Okay. Josh Bruner?
No comments from me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michelle Martin?
I agree with it.
Samantha Hassan?
I don't think she's here.
Okay, thank you. Christopher Dingle?
I can support this, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Larissa Knott? Did we lose Larissa?
We're checking.
Okay. I don't see her on my list of the.
Yeah, I don't see her either.
Okay. And I can support these changes as well. Okay. Do we still have quorum though with missing?
We're right at quorum. So if we lose one more.
Don't anybody else.
We cannot move forward. So, okay, so at that point, Chair, you have consensus on the proposals.
Correct.
If you guys want to move forward with a motion.
Can somebody make a motion in a second, please?
I move that we accept the budget as written, as discussed for the 2023 funding cycle.
I second the motion.
Thank you. If there are no nays, we will accept this funding recommendation for the 2023 funding session. Going once, going twice. So, no, I'm just kidding. We have passed this funding recommendation.
Oh, we still have agenda. So close.
Fantastic. So Chair, if it's okay, we'll do, we'll do staff updates.
And next steps. Yes, perfect.
So again, thank you for everybody who's joined us up until this point. This was a good, real first meeting for our newer committee members to go through a funding recommendation. This is a nice toe dip into what you will be doing for your human needs funding round that will be coming, which, yes, is quite a bit more applications than what you went through with this time. But staff wants to thank everybody. We actually had really, really strong compliance with providing scores and review during this process. And that was a huge improvement. Yes, we're very happy about that. That was a huge improvement from previous funding rounds. So thank you, everyone, for your participation, your work in Amplifund, and your diligence in consistently reviewing and scoring the applications that were presented to you. As far as this goes, again, public comment period will extend for 30 days past this formal decision. Anybody who would like to provide comment against the funding recommendations can either do so by either providing written comment to our offices or emailing comments to staff. All of this will be presented and available on the city's website, as well as in the Herald. And if you have not yet done so and are interested in doing so, our Community Development Newsflash is the best source of information from city on funding opportunities, as well as public comment periods. Following next steps, the next time that the committee will be looking at funding recommendations is going to be later this week. You will start to review your 2023 human needs funding proposals. You will have until December 5, I believe.
Yes, roughly.
To review that.
I'll email you and give you all the details.
About how many will that be?
It's about 23 application proposals that are coming, yeah, for this, for this latest funding round. So you guys will have a few weeks to review those. And then in mid-December, December 13 is our next public hearing. And we will go through this effort again. And so everybody gets to kind of hone your skills a little bit more on, on the process for it, and then also be mindful of any questions and responses that we have for the committee mem, or not committee members, for the agencies that attend these. After, just to completely close the loop on this, again, after you make your formal recommendations, staff composes everything into a resolution. It is brought to city council, and city council will then take action on your funding recommendations. They do not dive into any of the nuances with the applications. And so it is, again, testament to, to the work that you guys do, that you are the ones that most intimately know the applications and the proposals that are being presented. So again, thank you for taking the time to become familiar with them. Thank you for asking really good questions. And again, thank you to our agencies for being available to answer those. At that point, Vicki, have any other staff updates?
No, I think everyone probably wants to go. So I'll email you.
Yes, I will be gone for a little while for the holiday. But you guys will have Vicki available if you have any questions. So Chair, take us away.
We need a motion and a second to go away.
I move we adjourn. I move we adjourn.
Close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All right, everybody have a great night. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, take good care.
Thank you, happy holidays.
Same to you.
You, bye.
Bye, buddy.